Behind you, just so you know. My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. This is an ask everybody to remain standing just for one moment, for a moment in silence in memory of two past district employees, Ted Meyer and Pam Anderson. Thank you very much. Right over to Ms. Bennett.
All right, so in our student presentations this week is the East Hampton High School and Ms. Smith.
Thank you, everybody. I'm very excited to present the mock trial course and team. And just to give you a little big picture of, you know, why this is so important. The timeliness of our presentation is pretty fortuitous. Much of what mock trial is about is the art of persuasion, rhetoric, argumentation, civil discourse. And unfortunately, right now, we can turn on the news and with the Ukraine and Russia, see what happens, the dire consequences of when those things fall by the wayside. So I think that drives home the importance of what our students are learning with Ms. Gibbons. So last year, administration had the foresight to offer mock trial as an elective for our students. And given Ms. Gibbons' former career as a federal prosecutor, we felt she was probably qualified to teach the course. And though I joke, from our perspective, having Ms. Gibbons teach the course is exactly what you look for when thinking about electives for students. You want a subject that our teachers are passionate about, that can enrich our students' high school experience, perhaps offer texture or depth or variety to the traditional high school course load. And I think that's exactly what is happening with Ms. Gibbons and mock trials. So in addition to the course, we also have our mock trial team. And I will turn it over to Ms. Gibbons and our students to talk a little bit more about it.
Thank you for having us. As Ms. Smith said, I used to be an attorney. I was a prosecutor at the state level and the federal level. And I was really interested in offering this course. The art of trial advocacy requires that you analyze evidence, that you make arguments and defend those arguments with evidence. And I believe that's something that's very important. And so that's kind of the goal of the class. I don't want you to have to listen to me. They've all prepared. So it's just been a privilege to teach them, and I'm very grateful for the course. So this is Jonathan Cooper Swett, and he's going to speak first, a senior here.
Yes. So first, a mock trial we conducted in our class was called The People vs. Kelly Roberts. And essentially, first, the two cohorts were split into a defense team and a prosecution team. And depending on which team you're on, you either kind of portrayed the story as a drug deal gone wrong, or a guy who's in the wrong place at the wrong time. So over the course of five months, we analyzed evidence, learned how to use physical evidence in a trial, learned about past case precedents, like very hands-on work that is seldom seen in other places in the school and other courses, and just being able to learn this with the direction Ms. Gibbons, someone who's involved in this career for so many years has been privileged in itself. And it allows for an education, educational experiences, which are valuable here.
Thank you. Kayla Anderson, junior.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm going to talk about the competition aspect of our trial. So we get to go every day after school, or sometimes after school, and we work with like a club team, some people that want to take it a little bit further. And we practice on our other case, which is about a person dealing with securities fraud. And essentially, we go through that case and we practice it. And same way that we would do with the class trial, but then we go and actually compete with other schools, whether it be away or home. And in that, you really have to learn how to be super professional in court because the competitions are judged on a point system where you can win the verdict of the trial, but you can also win based on who was more professional in the way they were lawyers. So in that aspect, you know, we get to spend some more time practicing, get to really fine tune and polish our skills. And Ms. Gibbons and Mr. Lester are super helpful with that. And I think it's a really important part of the course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys need to introduce yourselves. I feel like I'm on a wave.
Hi, my name is Justin McKenna. I'm a junior in this school. And I would just like to say that this class doesn't just, you know, we aren't just learning about the law and, you know, the trial itself. This class also helps us with communication skills. You know, we are talking to people we wouldn't normally, you know, talk to. We speak in front of people. This class has helped me, you know, become more comfortable with speaking in front of, you know, people, which is something that I really hadn't done before this year. And the more practice you have, the more comfortable you become. And this class definitely is good for that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Juliana Lester, and I'm a senior. And as a student who hasn't necessarily been involved in a sport that requires teammates to collaborate in order to achieve a common goal, I feared that I missed out on a quintessential part of high school, but mock trial was able to give me that experience. I had to work with my fellow attorneys and witnesses to create a theory of the case and ensure that all the proper facts were introduced into each trial. And so creating a theory of the case is an essential part of any mock trial. And so working together to ensure that all of our ideas were incorporated in all of the details that we found in the case was essential. And also to incorporate those facts with the case law and the law in general that were presented to us in the mock trial materials was important. And so I was able to work with a team and rely on teammates, as well as have teammates rely on me, which is an experience for which I am eternally grateful. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Twel. I'm a senior. And mock trial has helped me, like, learn important life skills that I, like, struggle with. It helped. I always feared public speaking, and mock trial has made me, like, I had to talk more, where I tend to be more quiet. And it's helped me, like, be a lot more confident while answering questions that the judge asks or other attorneys, because I played the role as a witness. And then I also had to work on projecting my voice because I tend to be very quiet. Many times during practice, Ms. Gibbons would be like, "You need to talk louder."
You're doing great.
Which mock trial has been great for me to, like, work on some of those important life skills I'll need. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jason McKenna. I'm also a junior at this high school. For me, my favorite part about this class has got to be the cases. They're very complex, and it takes a lot of time to understand what goes into each case and the theories of each case. And to be able to work with our peers and kind of prove a common goal between the cases, it's a really valuable experience, and especially under the direction of Ms. Gibbons. It's just one that we wouldn't trade for the world. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hunter Everhart, and I'm also a junior here at the high school. And I'm just going to tell you guys a little bit about what we're going to do after the cases. So you guys have heard from John and Kayla and everybody else here about the trials and the cases that we put on the competition. But after that is all over, we also are going to move into the further depths of the law we're looking at right now, the Fourth and the Fifth Amendments of the Constitution, preparing us, Ms. Gibbons is preparing us, not only for trial if we'd like to become a lawyer, but also for what comes after high school, you know, one year later on in life, when, even though we're all great kids here. And we, we can help ourselves and we can prepare ourselves. We know what we're allowed to do, what our rights are, and things like that. And she's teaching us about the law, you know, so we know what's right and what's wrong. And she's kind of building us a path and laying the stepping stones for us to prepare ourselves to be great young adults. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Kimber Mau. I'm a senior here. And I am internally grateful for mock trial. As a senior going into college, I've thought a lot about my major and what future I want as in the career and in a career. I want to know what field I'm going into. And law has always piqued my interest. Mock trial has allowed me to fully envelop myself into the role of a lawyer and also the role of a witness, learning about the law, practicing public speaking, and also teamwork, as all mentioned previously by my classmates. I, mock trial is vital, not only for preparing students in the classroom, but also beyond. I feel much more confident in my decision in continuing my law career and my path in, for a law degree. And I can only say that, that's thanks to mock trial.
Thank you.
So I think that's about it for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming, and I have a point on my son. So it's good to see his years of arguing trade to for your class.
So I'd take your questions, as are your parents. I honestly does my class because I train for to argue. Doesn't it have any questions for us?
Yeah, is it, is this an English course?
It's an English elective. So most of what they're doing is arguing, argument, and just applying it with evidence. And they're giving jury addresses. They do, they elicit the evidence through direct examination. They attack the cross, so.
Is there a jury?
Okay, so what happens is, in the first part, we have an East Hampton trial. And we had, I forgot to mention this, we had, my law professor, I went to UVA for my first year, he flew in from, he teaches at Notre Dame, and he came in and judged for us. And Mr. Lester, Jules' dad, did too. Then we go compete in the spring, New York State Bar Association Competition against other schools. And they have judges, actual judges. So if we get past the first round, we have one tomorrow, if anyone's interested. But if we get past the first round, then we start competing in courthouses. They're not juries. It's actually a bench trial, which is a judge trial.
When and where is it?
Tomorrow's here, and it's going to be in the boardroom. It's going to be, it starts at 3:30. It goes to around 5:30.
A great place to argue.
I only think it's good.
Thank you so much for your time.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to news in the school. Dr. Soriano.
It was so nice to see. I remember Sarah, the twol, when she was at the middle school. She was very quiet and soft, seeing that development over time.
It's awesome.
And have such an awareness of it. That's so important. Well, first, we have, this week, our principal's breakfast and PTA meeting is going to be Thursday coming up, and we're going to do that live. We're transitioning back out of virtual experiences. And that's going to be about screen time and phone use. Given that, you know, the students have been so saturated in that experience over the past couple months, it's a good time to sort of reset and talk with parents about what we're doing at school and give them tips for home about how they can make some inroads and make some change. I mean, look, we all know, none of that is ever going away, but it's all about that, you know, self-awareness and management and respect that go along with making it, you know, an effective tool. We also will have parent-teacher conferences next week for two days. And that will be in person as well. I have a note going out, depending on what happens tonight, to all the parents to sign up for time slots and to come in person. We're not going to do, you know, we were talking about this as a staff today that only our eighth grade parents remember conferences doing it in the, you know, in the gymnasium because we've been off game for so long. It's two years now. So we decided that we're going to do the sign up, but then have parents go to individual classrooms and meet teachers there, and it can be, you know, private. So that'll be interesting to see how that goes, the sign up, as I said, goes out tomorrow. And then our science Olympiad will be competing this weekend at Candlewood Middle School in Dix Hills, and that's two teams of 18 kids total. This is their big competition that they prepare for all year, the regional. And that will be Mr. Patelli, Mr. Smith, Mr. Mauchke, and Mr. Fanazza. So I can report on how that went at the next meet. And I think that's, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Ms. Kuna.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
March is Park Month. Pick a reading partner at, well, it's Park Month everywhere, but we're certainly celebrating Park at John Marshall. And we have a number of events planned. A message went out today with the calendar, those events to families. We have a spirit week, the week of the 7th to the 11th, our Scholastic Book Fair from the 14th to the 18th, and the week of the 21st through the 25th, we are going to invite our mystery readers into the library. And we're going to extend that to district employees and to the Board of Education. We would love to have some guest mystery readers that last week of March. So I will be sending an email invite out to all of you. We'd love to see you in the library. Our building reading goal for Park Month is 200,000 minutes. So we're encouraging all of our students to not only do their usual reading, but to go above and beyond. And then I also thought I would share that on Monday, we are starting our rehearsals and auditions for the fourth and fifth grade musical. So we did not put on any performances last year. We had postponed our fall performance. And we're very much looking forward to it. We're doing a combined fourth and fifth grade spring musical, Jungle Book Kids. So we're happy to get that up and running as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
They were the main event, but just a few quick things. We do have the play this weekend, which we are very excited about, Friday, Saturday, and a 1 o'clock performance on Sunday of Footloose. We have March Madness coming up the week of March 14th. And we are very excited that we are back to a traditional March Madness, some minor modifications to our big Friday event, but for the most part, back to normal on that. And then on April 7th, we will also be doing a parent presentation by the retreat around digital boundaries, talking about teens and technology and technology addiction. So again, that will be April 7th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe?
Just a couple of quick ones. We are in between seasons right now. Spring sports start March 14th. We have it on Thursday night. We have our winter sports awards. And don't forget, on March 16th, Mr. Cooney gets inducted to the Hall of Fame in Saratoga, and we'll be up there celebrating him. So we'll take plenty of pictures and bring them back.
Thank you.
Yes, so I thought it would be prudent now for us to, if I can move up the old business mask mandate discussion, I think it would be, it might be something people want to talk about or hear about. So, you know, as I previously sent out to the community, after much, much consult consultation with our, our medical personnel, our nurses, our chief medical officer included, we have continually followed New York State guidance. You know, our nurses and CMO have recommended to me, even in consultation with our attorney, that after the governor made her edict of removing the mask mandate, that, that she, that we believe that it is time. We have followed everything. We have done the right thing. And we have, our cases are nothing right now, which is wonderful for the first time in the district. And we believe, and the staff believe, it's, it's, there's a light at the end of this tunnel. And I just want to throw it out there to the Board of Education. It is your, ultimately, your decision and discussion. And I just want to know where I stand and, you know, and whatnot, and I know you've.
Definitely. You know, if nobody minds, I'll start. But, you know, I think if anybody's paid attention to what we've done from the beginning to the end, we've listened to the state, listened to our medical professionals, we've listened to our chief medical officer and our own district nurses, who deal with it every day, our superintendent, also, our principals, they're all involved in it daily. And I think our numbers are where they, where we wanted them to be, and they can't get better than where they are for the moment. Let's hope it stays that way. But I support no mask. If we can have no mask, that's fantastic. I think we also just have to be on guard that, you know, and people need to know if it, if it changes and goes in another direction, we're going to also listen to that guidance as well. You know, we are on an island, so to speak, but it's a big island. And it's, it's very affected by what our, you know, peers and our neighbors do. So, you know, we need to follow that, that guidance from our professionals. I think we're in the place now where we can take them off. I'm happy about that. I think most people are happy about that. At the same time, if you don't feel comfortable and you want to wear it, that's fantastic. You can do that as well, and that's your choice. But this is where we are now, and I'll turn it over to the rest of the board. I don't know, you know, I think I have an idea how everybody feels, but it should hopefully, you know, end this.
Yeah, I agree. I think we're following, like, even the countywide, and we've been under 2% mostly for weeks. I mean, the drop from where we were between Christmas and New Year's at that time and the week that we came back and we had to shut down was, we were at like over 35%. Now we're been at consistently less than 2%. So I'm comfortable with listening to the experts. And, you know, we don't, we don't have a magic ball. So we don't know what's going to happen when we do lift it, if we choose to do that. But I think it's time to at least give it a try and see what happens.
Great. I also agree. It's time to, to try and lift it and see what happens. I think our medical staff has directed us, and we've done good. So I think that we're ready to lift the mask mandate. But I also want to make sure that if we do lift the mask mandate, that it's optional and that those people that would like to wear a mask are not belittled or harassed in any way, that they should feel comfortable wearing it if that's what they want to do.
Sandy, I think that's a really important point. So thanks, thanks for bringing it up. And that just repeats it to my thing, which is that this school board has, from the very beginning, followed the facts and the advice of professionals, and it's just not political for us. And I'm hoping that it doesn't turn into any sort of a political discussion in the future. So I'm comfortable lifting it. I would encourage parents to get their kids vaccinated for their own health because I think there's, there's the potential for more exposure this way. But I am, I'm comfortable following the advice of our professionals. And if there comes a time where they say, "Put them back on," I would hope that people would be respectful of that decision because I'm prepared to do, again, whatever the, I'm not a doctor, I'm not a medical professional. I just listen to what they say, so.
I think the enemy is the virus. That invasion to our community and our whole country, the whole world, is awful. And with respect to us and our community, thousands of decisions had to be made. And of course, when you make all those decisions, they're not always right. But I think now is the time, and hopefully, that this thing is going to subside. I think I'm very encouraged by the fact that we have, we have no new cases. I think it's important that every family consider seriously getting vaccinated. It makes us all safer. But that's, again, your own decisions. So I fully believe that now is the time to, as the governor suggests, to kill this mask mandate, and also for buses.
Yes, so thank you, John, for bringing that up. So what we're going to do is, we will, we have an agenda resolution the board will pass. It'll be actually vote on. We'll put that with the agenda items. Buses, too, is confirmation that it is, it is, it is an option at buses. The one thing that our medical personnel did recommend, and I do fully support, is we will continue to mask in the nurse's office. That's just common sense. You know, if you have a kid come in with COVID, you know, everybody should be masked. But that's in the nurse's office with the nurses and any personnel in the nurse's office. I don't think that is a big ask or reach in the community. I think that's just common sense. The one thing we are waiting for, because questions come up about quarantine, we are waiting for some guidance from New York State. What a shock. It's, it's not come through yet. We expected it today. I'm hoping it comes tomorrow so we can kind of go through it and whatnot. But other than that, the resident, the resolution has been drawn up for you to vote on, and it's ready for you to walk on when you get to those agenda items.
So they're going to advise about quarantining because taking the masks off may mean that if this case in your classroom, we don't know for sure yet, your entire class may be going back to quarantine.
Yes. We, we have been, the, the early word that we have heard is that the state's going to exhibit some, an extra level of common sense with that, with additional social distancing and stuff. They're not going to make it to the point where schools can't, can't run schools. They, they know in-person learning. So we've heard there are going to be recommendations, and then there's going to be additional guidance regarding quarantining that because we have avoided quarantined classrooms. So there is a test-to-stay model that we, we got, we have to look at. But again, we were told the guidance would come today. And again, like I said, what a shock. It didn't. Maybe it comes tomorrow, possibly. So as soon as we get that out, we'll go through that whole quarantine with our medical personnel and see what we need to do.
And I think also that, you know, there's an additional responsibility here on parents. And I mean that. I don't know. Look at the camera, which is, there are a lot of parents who use school as daycare sometimes. And I respect the fact that people are working and your kid is sick, and it's hard sometimes to, to take care of that. But if your child is sick, please, please, please keep them home. We, you know, we've come a long way with everyone working together on this. But we've had kids come to school with COVID and just to be sent home from the nurse's office. So I just.
No one like coming.
What? No one like coming with COVID. We've had many instances of that this in the last year. So, you know, I just think it's really important that we all need to be worked together here to keep our school.
Especially if you know, if you know. So we'll do that when we get to.
Yep, it'll be a walkout.
All right. Public comments for agenda items only. Anybody here want to make a public comment for one of our agenda items? Limited to three minutes, but come on up.
Does that include the discussion?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's on the agenda. So yes. All we ask is that you limit your comments to three minutes, and that's it. Say your name and district and residency.
My name is Jeanette Payne. I reside in East Hampton. I have a son in kindergarten class at the John Marshall School. And while I greatly appreciate the taking off of the masks in the schools, and I understand that a lot of times we have to, we always have to follow the state guidance, our children are born with the most incredible immune systems in the world. There's nobody that has a better immune system than our five-year-olds. And I think that as we pull the masks off, we're going to see COVID come back. We're going to see colds come back. We're going to see snot like we've never seen snot. We're going to see the flu come back. We have to remember that these kids can fight this off. We have to give them that chance to fight it off and not just say, "The masks have to come back on." I mean, I think of it, if it comes down to state level and they have to, but parents have enough common sense, most of us, that if our child is sick, we keep them home. We know how to hydrate them. We know how to feed the mice pups for dinner. We know how to take care of our kids and not let them go and get the whole school system sick, especially now that they're going to go to school without masks on. So I think as long as we just remember that taking off of the masks means that there is a higher risk for everything to come back, that they can fight it off. And if you have a high-risk relative or a high-risk parent, you don't send them to school without a mask. You keep the masks. Like, we know how to do this. We know how to take care of our kids. We know how to take care of our community. There's nothing more important to the, to the people that were born and raised here. So I think that that's just another consideration, too, is like, yes, the masks are there, but in December, we were all wearing masks, and we still had a tremendous fight. So the masks aren't doing the jobs that we think that they are. And that's just what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
We have no callers.
Thank you. We got one coming. Hold on.
My name is Evelyn, and I go to John Marshall School Elementary School. And I think that we should lift the mask mandate because it is not very effective in many ways. For example, my mom is an E and L teacher in spring school, and she's trying to teach kids that speak another language, English, which is extremely hard for her if they cannot see the way her mouth is moving. And I don't think that's fair for the kids that are trying to learn English. And so I think that's why we should lift the mask mandates.
Thank you.
Good evening. Very proud of my daughter stepping up in front of everyone. My name's Patrick. Obviously, my daughter attends school here in East Hampton. To follow up on what this lady said here with the masks and removing them now, maybe it's a temporary measure, maybe it's not. It's a, having a 10-year-old, having a wife that's worked in public schools for a long time, sickness is one of those things that affect children. It makes them stronger, you know, because they come through it. And I think to her point, we are going to see those snots. We're going to see those kids with the runny noses. We're going to have those problems with kids getting sick. And just to blame it on quote-unquote COVID, now that the masks have come off, use it as some kind of tool, it seems ridiculous to me. Additionally, I fear in the future, I know the school has been following what the state has said, what Mr. Foster has said, we do what our neighbors are doing. You know, this isn't, this isn't a thing to fit in. This is a thing to do what's right for our children. And I think it's pretty clear from the parents that are here, the Facebook groups, the online forums, parents are fed up with this. It's insane to me. I fear for those parents and those kids that are, have entered school at the kindergarten age with masks. You know, you speak to the school's social workers, the E and L teachers, the children are having a very hard time pronouncing, and they're more inflecting words. I'm sure the teachers can speak to this much more than I can. But the threat that, well, we may bring them back, we may not, I think is unacceptable. We've been following what the state has been telling us, what the federal government's been telling us to do, and it's not working. And now all of a sudden, we have this carrot of Ukraine, and COVID goes away. So I think we, as a community, need to do what some of the other communities of Island have done, and eliminate the masks altogether. Now, I'm not saying you don't wear a mask. If you want to, wear one. I'm all for that. And how do you pronounce your last name?
Lois.
Lois. In your statement earlier, you said that you were not a healthcare professional. And I appreciate that, nor am I. But for you to sit in an elected position and recommend a medical procedure to the crowd is asking. Okay, I work in law enforcement. I'm not going to recommend to you what to do to keep your family safe, how to protect your.
I'm just letting you know, your time's almost up.
How long have I been up here?
Three minutes, just about.
Okay. So to sit in an elected position and preach to the choir that what we should do with our family, our body, is not, is not right. Now, if you're making a recommendation for what we should do in the schools, that's why you're elected. That's why you're here. Education, let's hear it. But don't tell people in the crowd what they should do with their body, what medicines they should take. That's inappropriate. So I appreciate all the work that you all do, and I hope our community comes out of this way ahead. Thank you.
Can he take another three minutes? I'd like to wait to somebody else.
I'm sorry, what?
Maybe in a minute.
Anybody else? We'll close that section, and we'll move on to the superintendent's report and recommendations. So we got the, yeah, we're going to send the agenda first.
Yes.
Have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? There's none. All in favor? Any opposed? Now we'll move on to the superintendent reports and recommendations. Item number one, let me get the right spot here. Item number one. Recommend that the board approve the following resolution. Be resolved that the Board of Education of the East Hampton Union Free School District approve the employment agreement between the board and Sam M. Schneider, Assistant Superintendent for Business dated March 1st, 2022, in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in said agreement, and be it further resolved that the board authorize the president to, President of the Board to execute employment agreement on behalf of the board. Do you have a motion?
I make it.
Second, second. Any discussion? Congratulations. Welcome. I know Mrs. Schneider's here. Thank you for coming. We really appreciate that. And welcome. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number two. Recommend the board approve the following resolution. Resolve that the board accept the letter of resignation from Nancy Elia and the Position of Paraprofessional effective March 1st, 2022, close the business day, and be it further resolved that Nancy Elia is upon the recognition of the Superintendent of Schools appointed to a Teaching Assistant Level One position for probation period of four years. It commends on March 2nd, 2022, expires on March 1st, 2026, and the annual salary of $35,080 pro-rated. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Two spots?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three. Recommend the board approve the following resolution. Resolve that the board accept letter of resignation from Lauren McMullen Cook from the position of paraprofessional effective March 1st, 2022, close the business day, and be it further resolved that Lauren McMullen Cook is upon the recognition of Superintendent of Schools appointed to a Teaching Assistant Level Three positions at an annual salary of $50,076 pro-rated. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four. Recommend the board approve the following appointments to the 2021-22 school year, beginning with Community Service Coordinator down to, the next page, yeah, Substitute Custodian. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Three standard appointments?
Yep.
All in favor? Any opposed? Number five. Recommend the board approve the following resolution. Resolve that the memorandum of agreement dated June 16th, 2020, and contract July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2024, within the East Hampton Union Free School District and the East Hampton School Administrative Association is hereby ratified. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Any discussion?
Just finalize the contract.
All in favor? Any opposed? Number six. Recommend that the board approve the following resolution. Resolve that the resolution number 16 two, under the superintendent's report and recommendations adopted July 6th, 2021, for meeting regarding the consultant agreement between the East Hampton Union Free School District and Amanda Jones as a 4th grade elementary school vocal director, hereby, hereby is rescinded. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. Any discussions? Personnel, so no. All in favor? Any opposed? Number seven. Recommend the board approve, sorry, I'm going to approve the following resolution. Resolve that the board approve the following consultant agreement for the 2021-22 school year as follows. It begins with I, consultant agreement, and down to number four. Do you have a motion?
I make it.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Number eight. Recommend the board approve the contract for receipt of federal Part B flow-through allocations in accordance and terms and conditions set forth in said contracts for 2021-22 school year between the East Hampton Union Free School District and Southern County Department of Health Services and Alternatives for Children. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Number nine. Recommend the board approve the revocable license agreement between the East Hampton Union Free School District and the South Fork Wind LLC for the sole purpose of allowing licensee South Fork Wind LLC to park approximately 25 automobiles and/or light trucks at this district's new transportation depot located on Springs Fireplace Road in East Hampton from March 2nd through June 30th, 2022, in accordance and terms set forth in revocable license agreement. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just to explain it, they're letting us stay and use our old facility, even though our lease is up. We're just helping them.
They're giving us.
We're in their way.
Yeah.
On one foot to shuffle.
Yeah, we, we have space, and that's not interfering with our construction project, so we're allowing them to do something. They're helping us out with our buses. Hopefully, you know, everything can use to go and play construction wise.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 10. Recommend the board accept with gratitude the anonymous donation of six paintings and three black and white sketches by artist Oliver Johnson for the placement in the East Hampton Middle School. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Discussion? Thank you very much. Great gamers. Any other conversation? All in favor? Any opposed? Number 11. Recommend the board approve the following budget transfers. The first one is English instructional salary funds transferred out in era. And then number two is BOSI's digital funds needed for enrollment increase, and number three, additional funds needed for operations for special projects. Do you have a motion?
I make it. Second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Just standard.
Move from one line to another?
Yep.
All right. All in favor? Any opposed? And then this is number 12. This is going to be our walk-on. I am not going to read the whole thing. There's too many words. It's in here for me. So it's, whereas on February 22nd, 2022, New York State Department of Health, we adopted emergency regulations 10, which imposes mandatory masking rules upon school districts, and determined by the New York State Commissioner of Health. It continues on. It's basically what we just discussed a few minutes ago. In a summary, that's what it is. You can go look at it online and see what, what it is, if you'd like to know more about it. But something that, let me just, let me just get a motion first. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
So discussion, this is what we talked about in the beginning when we started, but something that's, that should be noted, and I think that Brian can probably speak to it, our attorney, a little more. We don't have masks. If we go to a district that requires masks, and that's their rule, then we will be expected to wear masks on their property. That's nothing, we have nothing, no control over that. So that's something that should be noted. Is there anything else, Brian, that you wanted to note?
Yeah, this was, in this resolution, it basically, it, it takes the district mask optional, just as, as you explained in your, in your discussion before, and with two exceptions. One is if someone has to go to the nurse's office and they're sick, they have to keep a mask on if it's a COVID-like symptom until, you know, the nurse figures out what's wrong with them and, and, you know, what needs to be done with that student. That's just. And the second exception, as you just said, is if a group of district students have to go to another location on a school function, like a field trip or something like that, and they go to a place that requires masks, then they would have to keep their mask on when they go to that location. Because the local rules would trump the East Hampton rules here. But, and that's, that's the gist of this resolution.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's done. All right. So we're, nice, any other business is done. Do you want to give a pandemic?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, our numbers are obviously very good, staffing-wise, kid-wise. Everybody seems to be, you know, so far, we have not seen, you know, obviously, we're only in day two, but, you know, kind of any, any additional spike or, or anything. We're in a very good place. You know, so we're very pleased and.
So the other thing is community housing update.
Yeah, so we had our first community housing update, or, excuse me, meeting. I must say, you know, it, this is a very challenging topic. I, I think you read about it all the time. You see it here. We've had the discussions with our teaching staff, our non-instructional staff. The board has talked about. You know, I must say, the meeting brought up a number of other great ideas that we, you know, talked about with our surrounding districts. There was representation from Sag Harbor, Amagant, Springs, Montauk, East Hampton, the town, the town. So it really was a fruitful discussion. Right now, each of the school districts are surveying teaching staff. We've sent surveys out to their teaching staff regarding situations where they're living and whatnot, and what they would be looking for. And, you know, I mean, you guys, you know, were there too.
It was a very productive meeting. It was really, it was great to have as many representative, you know, as many representatives from all the different towns there, and I think there were a lot of good ideas, and I think, you know, the importance is sometimes you have one idea, but if you don't keep meeting, it's hard to keep the momentum going. So I think it's just really good to have this, this group together.
Right.
And to keep working, you know, as, as a community towards it.
Yeah, definitely.
Good. All right. Budget, next budget work session will be next Tuesday at 6:00, probably in the boardroom or something.
It'll be the school budgets, so it's the John Marshall Middle School and the High School. We talked about their budgets.
Athletics.
And athletics.
All right.
Funny thing.
Yeah, revenue. Number 10, public comments. Does anybody have a public comment that they'd like to make? All right.
Any callers?
Was, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Now I forgot. Where are you? I'm expecting people to be here. Anybody, any callers back for comment?
No, we have no callers.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
All in favor? Thank you. Thank you for coming out.